I want to welcome everybody here this morning and let you know that Richard Alikon just gave me permission to start the committee meeting and I thank you for that. I probably would have been sitting here for a half hour, I guess.
You're my friend.
No, I'm afraid to be your friend. Anyway, Mr. Reyes is here and again, Richard Alikon is here. Today's date is February 3rd. This is a joint committee hearing with this committee in Plum. We have several items that I think we can move on consent with the three of us here. Mr. City Attorney, we do have a quorum. Do we have a backup member of the CLA here just in case Meg, Ms. Barclay, has to leave or take a call or, you know, a call from Washington or something? Do we have anybody here from the CLA's office that can be her backup? Just in case.
I'm not sure about that part, but as for the quorum question, we do have a quorum of HCD but not of Plum at this point.
Okay, well, in the event that she has to leave the room, her duties will be transferred to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. While you are here, if we could, let's go through items two through seven. In fact, Ms. Barclay, if you could read item two.
Item two is a report from the Community Redevelopment Agency and the Chief Legislative Analyst and a resolution relative to appropriating funds and adopting findings for design and engineering services for full street improvements in the Wilmington Industrial Park.
Okay, then without objection, we'll adopt the CLA report on that item, item two.
Item two is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to executing a contract with the Urban Land Institute to convene an advisory panel to review the proposed Clean Tech Corridor.
Okay, then we'll adopt the CAO report on item three. That brings us to item four. And we've just been joined by Councilmember Perry. Mr. Reyes has a...
On number three, do we have an extraordinary opportunity in that the Clean Tech Corridor runs parallel with the Los Angeles River and if you look at, the progress has been made in terms of entitlements, re-entitlements, reassessing the urban fabric, if you will, and the land use patterns with the new zoning that is being proposed. I think it's critical that the alignment of what the Clean Tech Corridor is trying to achieve, our ability to realize the opportunities that are available to the city because of this shift in land use patterns is critical, especially when we talk about how you create relief because of the density, how you create jobs, how you create mixed use. The potential for those scenarios are great and the creation of jobs is even better. So when you talk about live-work spaces, these are the kinds of strategies that I think we could move on quickly. I believe we're about eight months right now from finishing the specific plan for the Royal Cycle Plan and the northern part of the Clean Tech Corridor actually overlays with this area. So as we look at those strategies, as it goes south along the river, you have these opportunities to leverage these types of scenarios. So I want to make sure that the folks who are looking at the study, that they realize how to incorporate and, again, analyze those opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item four.
Item four is a report from the CRA and the CAO relative to executing a cooperation agreement with the Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Services to provide as-needed construction services.
Okay, item four, we'll adopt the CAO report. I'll let you read item five, but Mr. Kardanis has requested that we continue that item for one week, it's my understanding, but read the item.
Yes, sir. Item five is a report from the CRA and the CLA relative to awarding contracts to four firms for land title services.
Okay. With those weird sounds, I lost where we are. I think we're on item six?
Yes, sir. Item six, a report from the CRA and a resolution relative to acquiring property at Hill Place and Ord Street and Teed Streets in Chinatown redevelopment project area for the creation of a park.
Okay, on item six, we'll continue that as well for one week. I'm just taking advantage of you while you're here.
Yes, sir.
You know, I want to make sure you get your time in and you, you know...
I'm here for you, Mr.
Item seven?
Item seven is a motion, Ella Conkardanis, relative to $1.25 million funding gap for the Pacoima Entrepreneurship and Training Center project.
Okay, on item seven, we'll adopt that motion. We've got... Ella, did I have public comment cards or just comments on one item? Or they're all...
I believe you have one card for item number one and the remainder are general public comments.
Okay. All right, then let's have Chuck Tenen come forward, please, and Dr. Williams, you're on deck. Good morning, Chuck. It's been a while.
It has. Been busy. Good morning, Herb and councilmembers. I have something that I'd like to bring before you. The Housing Department contracted for rehab work to help people that needed help to fix their homes up to an acceptable level of living. The Housing Department contracted one in particular, the LA Neighborhood Housing Services. To get paid to contract to do the work, yet an interesting thing I found, and I asked other people about it, the contractors take all the money and they get paid that, and guess what? All the items that are under warranty, things that break down, they don't honor it. And yet, the LA Neighborhood Services and probably others, they give the money with good intent and the contractors keep all the warranties and everything and then they don't have it. And so what happens? They take the money and what happens to the people that have things that they got fixed that they owe to the City Housing Department and the Housing Department paid to these people? Well, what do they do when the contractors are gone and they don't honor things that needed to be fixed if they have warranties and there's no warranties? What happens on that? The other thing is, listen to Councilwoman Janice Hahn, collect debts from tax offenders that owe money and don't pay so our city budget doesn't get worse and our city taxpayers don't suffer by paying more and there's unnecessary layoffs. And also, the army of portable signs grows and grows and grows, it's amazing, in our neighborhoods. And there's graffiti on it and they make money on it. They get a free ride at the community's expense and it hurts people there. And it needs to be looked upon because it grows and grows. Now there's trucks with signs on it and they take up parking and they're going to do something about it, but what do they do? And that's the point. The city, a lot of things that they are supposed to enforce or collect monies and things, they should do it. Then we won't have all the things that we suffer from. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Dr. Williams.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Burt Road, El Serena. Last night, we had a Caltrans presentation and afterwards, we talked to the acting district manager. The fundamental problem with Caltrans is that nobody trusts them. Everything they say is basically either half-truths, lies, or responding to an immediate danger of reprimand or something else. One of their problems is the Maclay's bungalows, but also the other 500 dwelling units that are owned by Caltrans in our neighborhood and South Pasadena and Pasadena. Nobody trusts them. There's a tenants association which is always trying to discreetly get their buildings repaired, but the money that they pay goes to Sacramento and Sacramento then gives the money back to District Seven sometimes, as usual, not often. What happens is that they become a slumlord. We have eight dwellings that have been unoccupied for over five years. They were going to be demolished, then they weren't, then they were, then they weren't, and because of citizens' requests, they are still there and now they've been improved a little bit. Why? Because people started questioning what was going on. We're still trying to find out what the legal obligations are of Caltrans to repair their slums, to put the housing back into the, at least, the tenant market, and we're actually trying to get them to sell. But can we trust Caltrans? Can we trust the City Council? We'd like to find out about what the relationship is between the City Council and Caltrans regarding enforcement of codes within the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, and I can assure you that you can trust the City Council. I can't speak for Caltrans because we worked there for a while and...
At least I respect Mr. Parks because he's really on it.
Well, I will make sure he knows that you said that. Okay, Joyce Young and Eileen Ma, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning. Joyce is with us, but she's not here at the moment. I wonder if she could be moved to the back of the deck.
We will do the best that we can.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eileen Ma with the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, and we addressed this issue at City Council yesterday, Tuesday, rather, as well. But we wanted to come to address last week's decision that this committee took with the other committee, the Art Parks Health and Aging Committee, on the parks list for Prop 84. And we were really excited to see the park list move forward, but unfortunately, one of the parks in Koreatown, one of the three, was removed from the list for unclear reasons and seemingly perhaps administrative reasons, but ultimately, what we believe not necessarily justifiable reasons. And so we're here to ask the committee to please restore that particular park, which is a park between Wilshire and Western, I'm sorry, Wilshire and Seventh on Hobart, to that list or to take separate action to include an application to the state for Prop 84 funding for the park again at between Wilshire and Seventh on Hobart. Our particular concern is just, one, we weren't sure about why that park in particular was removed during, you know, that committee discussion. You know, we were aware of the proceedings and, you know, it didn't seem, it was actually discussed by the committee. And then, secondly, we wanted to, you know, make sure that this committee did as much as possible to, again, restore that park to the list.
Okay, thank you. I'm very familiar with the situation. I'm going to attempt to try to answer your question. The CRA, when they began discussions with the community about this park, they never informed my office. We never, it was never organized the way that I would generally have wanted to organize it. You've got a group of people that are very supportive of it and you've got a group of people that aren't supportive of it, that have concerns. Had we worked together from the very beginning, which I'm hopeful we will now, we'll come up with a way to identify another area or work it out for that area and restore the park. I have a track record that goes back from Sacramento to Sacramento recognizing how park poor we are, and I have a commitment to the Koreatown area, which it really is park poor, maybe one of the poorest in the district, to try to identify properties and convert it into parks and pocket parks. So I'm committed to do that. Where it relates to this park, it wasn't done the way that I would have normally done it. I apologize for the CRA. It could have been handled better, but at this point, I do not anticipate that we will put that back in the queue right now. But that's basically what happened. When you're going to take a plot of land like that, you want to get buy-in from all concerns and that's not there. So for everybody that you bring down in support of, there's another group that is against the park. So that's really what the situation is. Again, I'm sensitive and again, I'm committed to putting parks in that area. And whenever the opportunity arises, I will in fact do that.
I wonder if I may follow up just one moment?
No, no, you can't because you guys are meeting with somebody in my office later today.
We were hoping to meet with...
But I've got to go deal with a $200 million budget crisis at 10 o'clock, but you're dealing with somebody who has my total confidence. You will meet with him later today. I asked him to set the meeting with your organization yesterday. So any questions that you have, you can talk to Mr. Bay about those, and I think Mr. Johnson may be in that meeting as well. So with that said, the next...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your community involvement. Al Sable?
Good morning. And then after Al, if Curtis Killings, you're on deck. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Al Sable and I'm a renter in downtown Los Angeles and also a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I came to give public comment today to remind everyone the importance of having the rent stabilization ordinance review put on the HCD agenda as soon as possible. Today's landlord panel was canceled for the second time and we want to urge you to schedule it and move forward this month. In 2007, the City Council approved the beginning of this LARSO review process. That cost LA taxpayers $1 million and came to the conclusion that the majority of LA tenants are rent burden. It is true. We are. Two years later, we are still rent burden. Health and human service programs have been cut to some of the deepest level in many years. For example, our SSI checks have been cut four times in the last year. Our incomes are getting lower, but our rent is continuously going higher and higher. On July 1st, LA tenants are going to face rent increases that don't reflect the reality of the economic crisis. The CPI is actually negative, yet the RSO currently allows a minimum rent increase of 3%. You add that to the 2% for gas and electric and you're talking about a 5% increase. Your consultant recommended removing this minimum rent increase and we are calling on you to do just that. July 1st will come faster than we think. Move the RSO reforms forward. Let's stop the delays now because a 5% increase annually for a person on fixed income such as myself, Social Security, is unsustainable. 80,000 people homeless in this city is a crime, but it's only the tip of the iceberg if we don't do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, and we hope to schedule that within the month before the month is out.
We certainly would appreciate that.
We're going to do it. How are you, Mr. Killings?
Just poke myself in the eye, so I'm kind of dealing with blindness right now, but I'm...
How would you poke yourself in the eye? With your glasses? You have two fingers.
I was just about clapping for you like you were talking about last time I was here?
Yeah.
And see, it just went right and bam, it went right in the eye. So...
Well, I don't want to be the one responsible for your injury.
There's a lesson there.
There's a lesson, but it is good to see you again and welcome.
It's everybody here. Good to see everyone here. Again, my name is Mr. Curtis Killings and I am a tenant and a renter, of course. I'm also a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network, better known as LA CAN. Over the last couple of months, we have been coming before you highlighting the importance of creating a balance between RSO tenants and landlords, which kind of seemed like it's kind of going the other way toward the landlord, you know? And we're trying to create this balance, which was the original intent of the RSO, to create a balance. Okay, today, we are here before you to stress the importance of moving the RSO review forward and enact the changes that tenants outlined in November, especially, especially the recommendation that we end the guaranteed 3% that I specifically spoke on at that time.
I remember.
Minimum rent increase and the end to the additional 2% that the landlord is allowed to charge to the tenants when they pay their electric and gas bill, you know, so they can put their little gravy on their dinners when they eat at night, a little extra gravy. You know, this is an important issue to the LA Housing Preservation Alliance and thousands of tenants citywide. We urge you to schedule the next hearing ASAP. I understand what cities going through right now as far as, just like you just commented on, the budget balancing or whatever like that, you know, whatever. We're part of that too, you know? We're trying to get this budgeted, we're trying to get this issue straightened out here, you know? It seems like one thing leads to another and we constantly keep getting tabled, you know? That tabling, you know, seemed like with a little bit of compassion, even political compassion, would be on table and dealt with, you know? I appreciate it very much. Thanks for your time.
Good to see you again and be careful. Levita Marbury, James Porter, and Joseph Thomas, you're on deck. Good morning.
How's everyone?
Great.
Good. I am a, my name first of all is Levita Marbury and I live in the downtown Central City East area, and I am here to say, I am here today talking to you because I want you to know how important improving our rent stabilization ordinance is to me. I have been rent burdened by your standards for years and the problem is only getting worse. We renters are the majority, not the landlords and homeowners, in this period of economic crisis. Let's not make more problems for people by increasing rents. The July 1st date for rent increases is coming soon. You can help and do your job for tenants citywide by moving forward with the RSO hearings this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's, I forgot which one was next.
James Porter.
Okay, I'm good. Yourself?
Yeah. Good morning. My name is James Porter. I am a tenant and I'm also a member of LA CAN. I'm here today to stress the needs of the tenants, particularly low-income tenants. In this time of economic crisis, during and during prosperity, we are rent burdened. It is your chance and duty to revise the LARSO. We spent $1 million on a study and LAHD has made their recommendation clear. This is urgent. This is necessary. Address the RSO immediately. So I close this thing to you. Open your eyes so you can see what we see. Open your ears so you can hear what we hear. Open your heart so you can feel what we feel and open your mind so you can understand what we're going through.
Mr. Porter, that was powerful closing. Thank you. Ms. Marbury, do you remember when you went to elementary school and you come in and the teacher would say, "If you bring in candy, you have to bring candy for everybody else"? You are working that gum. As soon as I go downstairs, I want to get me some gum. I just want you to know that.
All right.
Okay, I mean, working it. It cannot have any more sweetness in it. It cannot. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Thomas and I'm a tenant down here in this downtown community, and I'm also a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. As many before me, I'm here before you today to offer you an opportunity to make great impacts on the thousands of RSO tenants that call Los Angeles home. You can do this by moving the RSO reviews and proposed recommendations forward this month. The last two RSO hearings at this committee have been postponed and we are here today to urge you to schedule the next hearing as soon as possible. The Los Angeles Housing Department has already released their bulletin that documents how much owners can increase our rent this year. Things are moving forward under current standards, but the economic crisis calls for fast action by you. We need to balance the needs of tenants and lower our rent burden. The RSO was brought into effect to ensure to that a balance existed between landlords and tenants, but it doesn't. Yet we know this is not happening. The study you called for shows this and we were here last November to tell you the same. Move the RSO review and proposed changes forward. This month is urgent. Basically, we in your mind should stand still while everyone else goes up. Should we, the poor, be punished for the existing greed this city invented? Thank you.
Thank the three of you for coming. Nick Dahman, please come forward. And if you'd state your name because I got a feeling I didn't do it justice.
Sure. It's Dahman, but Dahman sounds fine to me.
What is it?
Dahman.
Come on.
Yeah, for real.
All right. All right. I mean, it's your name.
Go with it. Go with it.
Yeah, go.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Go ahead.
Don't question it. Just go with it.
My name is Nick Dahman. I'm a tenant and I'm also with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. We're also here today as part of the Los Angeles Housing Preservation Alliance. We represent five key areas in the city: downtown, Boyle Heights, in East LA, South Los Angeles, MacArthur Park, and Venice. Between our groups, we have over 1,000 active tenants with over 100,000 tenants living in our communities. We've heard on your agenda today about lots of planned projects. We know that the city is mired in deficits and budget shortfalls. However, we, the tenant majority in the city, have had deficits and shortfalls for a very long time. We need this committee to address the revisions to LARSO. The Economic Roundtable Study found that tenants were burdened while on the hole, landlords were doing well. LAHD has set this rent increase at 3% because of an allowed minimum. Please move to schedule the landlord hearing as soon as possible and move forward to preserve the housing we already have. Thank you.
Thank you, and we, again, it is my intention to put that, get that together before the month is out. And thank all of you for coming down here today. A lot of you I already know, so it was a pleasure to see you again and it was also a pleasure to meet the new people that, Ms. Marbury in particular. Did Joyce Young get here yet?
No.
Okay, well, then we have Danny Park and Jang Nam. Mr. Park, good morning and come forward.
Good morning. I didn't bring any chewing gums, but I brought you reports
Okay.
that we could share. It's a report that Kiwa, Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, had published last year. 87% of the respondent in the study had said that they need parks in Koreatown. There was three parks that came forward within the same Koreatown area and same process was taken by CRA, and I can't understand why two other parks was not excluded, Lafayette and Francis, but only Koreatown Park, which is on Wilshire and Hobart, was taken off of the list. And it was stated that there was a pushback within the community. However, all the community meetings that, five of them that we went, we have not seen any of the pushback. And I believe this pushback is coming from the developers, saying people that who took away our housings from, by doing condo conversions. And I would like to request and ask that Wilshire and Hobart Park, yes, add it back to the list before the full council hearing. What we are asking is a day in court so that the list go forth on Prop 84 state hearing and, you know, at least have a chance to be on that, you know, have, make that decision come down.
And thank you for taking the time and coming forward and be assured, it is our intention to get additional areas within the Koreatown area and transform them into parks. So I'm sure at the end of the day, we will work together and make this happen. Ms. Nam?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am also a member and an organizer for Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance, and I'm here today to let you know that we have been participating in planning or some sort of a... planning or some sort of a public or, um, small to large meetings for about five months now that the CRA has put on. And, um, and we thought, you know, we had no idea that, um, uh, city council could vote, uh, to, um, not apply for the state, uh, grant. And, uh, so we had no idea that our park could be singled out and, uh, be removed from the list of the parks that are being applied for the state fund. And, um, so we are kind of confused, we were kind of confused at first and shocked. Now we are kind of outraged because it was a very public meeting and through, throughout those five months of public meeting, there was no opposition. Nobody came and, and said that this could happen, that, uh, it would not be applied to. And there was a lot of other community members who came out to those meetings, planning meetings, um, as if those planning meetings, you know, that, that application was going to go on and, uh, there, you know, we had no idea it could be voted down or singled out. And, um, and I understand that, um, maybe some of you didn't know that it was happening, but, um, because it was so public, because it was in the media, I, I don't think, um, that was a very good excuse. And, and that, um, if you were going to vote it down or if you were going to take it out, if there was an opposition, I think, uh, it would have been nicer if, uh, the people who went to those meetings, the planning meetings, could have been asked, uh, or had been, um, told that this kind of opposition could happen or something like this could happen. Because we are, we're pretty mad that we have to go to all those meetings, we have to spend all that time and drawing and planning and giving us hope that this, this beautiful park is going to be in our neighborhood. And we're very mad. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, please, uh, don't direct your anger at any, uh, other members on this, uh, committee because their decision was mine. So, and I appreciate their support on that. Uh, at this time, where it relates to this item, I've got five cards and everybody who wants to speak on this item, these five people will be afforded the opportunity, but we're going to cut off cards where it relates to this item from this point on so that we can move forward with our additional business. Rebecca Ronquillo? Ronquillo?
Ronquillo.
I'm not having the best day with these names today.
Ronquillo.
Okay, sounds good.
Ronquillo.
Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. Uh, first of all, I'd like to ta, uh, thank, um, City Council Ed Reyes for helping us with the 1322 South Catalina Building. Uh, we're very thankful and I would want to acknowledge that your staff works really hard, like in our experience. Anyway, so my name's Rebecca Ronquillo again and I'm an organizer for the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance. And I work directly with our NOK Committee, which is the KIWA Neighborhood Organizing Committee of Koreatown. And we focus mostly on community needs and in this case being the park. Um, and on behalf of, uh, many of our tenants, uh, and of course their families, we really would appreciate that we reconsider, you know, when these decisions are made and it being a more transparent process in terms of, um, really asking the community if we feel that this park should be removed or not and really looking at the area and how far parks are from each other. Um, there's a big problem of overcrowding in housing in Koreatown and having a recreational space helps a, a lot. Um, and out of our surveys, which the result that you guys have on your, in front of you with the report, uh, we, I myself, uh, and talked to a lot of community members and parks are one of the top, uh, things that they mentioned to me. So I just really want to bring out the voice of the community and you are all welcome to come with me and door knock and really talk to the community and see where it's coming from. I really do encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Javier Gutierrez? I'm the only one that needs it, uh, I'm sure he can come and speak and, and one of my colleagues will, you can do it.
Just give her, give him a little extra time.
And he will, he will have extra time. So you.
Go ahead, I can.
Good morning and welcome.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Javier Gutierrez y soy miembro de KIWA.
Good morning, my name is Javier Gutierrez and I'm an active, I'm sorry, I am a member of KIWA.
Y vengo aquí a pedir de favor de que, creo que escuché que quieren cancelar el parque de las siete y la hoja. Y vengo a hablar porque yo vivo en el Koreatown y es, hace mucha falta un parque.
Um, I heard, uh, that, uh, that the park might be pulled out or might not happen and I'm here to ask you to reconsider that. I have lived, I live in Koreatown and I do see the huge need, uh, for a park.
Porque yo vivo en el Koreatown y me fijo la, la falta de que hace un parque porque los niños en ese andan jugando en la calle y es un gran peligro.
Um, I often see children paint, playing on the street or the sidewalk and I see that as a very dangerous thing to do, uh, and again, going to the park.
Ah, si hay parques pero a nuestras familias les queda muy lejos y cuando salimos nuestras familias es muy peligroso también y por eso les pido de favor de que reconsideren, de que nos hace falta un parque en el Koreatown.
Uh, parks are not very close to each other and a lot of the times our families, we walk to parks and at times that's not the safest way either because they're from long distance from where, um, they reside.
Y pues nuevamente les pido que reconsideren esta, esta propuesta del parque y pues sí porque se hay mucha, mucha criminalidad ahorita en las calles y pues un parque nos haría mucha falta porque nuestros niños miran mucho criminalidad en la, en las calles y...
Uh, there's quite a bit of crime out there in the streets, um, and which is why I ask you to reconsider your decision. It is important for our children to have a space in which they can, um, go about freely and have a green space and really not see all that crime happening around them. But having that park, uh, Javier feels that that would minimize it.
Y pues bueno, nuevamente les pido que reconsideren eso y muchísimas gracias.
And again, I would like to ask you all to reconsider and thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Gavin Corona?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, y'all. Uh, thank you for giving me some time because I know we're dealing, we're all dealing with that $200 million deficit and see it in your eyes, I see negative signs and trying to figure out what we're going to do. But I'm pretty sure I wouldn't be the only one thinking about it, but let's think about law enforcement budget too because we should all take an equal fair share of what's going on in this economy. But I'm also here to talk about what LA CAN was talking about. Um, we need to get that RSO study going and the review going, uh, there needs to be some changes. Uh, you know, if we expand RSO to other buildings, other years, that might be some revenue that can come in, not much, but it can be some, so let's think about that as a strategy. Uh, not going to take much of your time, I know there's a 10 o'clock meeting coming up that going to be focusing a lot about our budget. Uh, but I'm here basically to say is that, uh, I know Ed, I live in your district, uh, I'm a tenant myself, um, going through the rent burden myself. Voted for you for your third term, I think this is your final term, right?
Yes.
And I know how much of a proponent you've been for housing and you've always said, as long as we're trying to build some, you know, unity around that, you'll support it. And so I think it's happening. And so I'm hoping your final term, we can get your support on something moving forward for tenants which are the majority of LA. So I'll let it go there. Thank you so much, once again, Gavin Corona, and have a great day.
Thanks for coming to City Hall.
Gavin, thank, thank you for coming. Uh, the last two speakers, I think it's Thelma Perez and, uh, Mr. Suk Bong? It's Thelmy?
Thelmy Perez.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I won't take too much time, I think that, um, I already heard your commitment to push along the RSO review. Um, I really, really want to emphasize that we need RSO reform, not just review. We've had, we spent a million dollars already. I'm looking at the RSO, I think we need to move forward on looking at where it's failing us and how we can better it, um, to protect tenants. So I'm here as a tenant today of Koreatown and I'm also asking that you reconsider looking at green spaces in Koreatown. It's really important for our community, they're few and far between. Um, and lastly, I want to say that while we're looking at this RSO review or this RSO reform, I think that it's really important to consider, uh, a rent freeze. As a tenant, it's really difficult for me to ask for repairs in my building, uh, although I'm advocating for other folks to do the same because I know that my landlord will rent, raise the rent right when I do that, right? I can't afford that. So I'm living with leaks, I'm living with, um, sewage in my backyard, which is embarrassing to me because it smells bad, but again, I can't afford an extra $50 a month. So I'm really asking that during this economic hardship time, that you consider looking at a freeze to, um, rent increases. I think it's really important for the city of Los Angeles, I think it's important for our economy. We can put more dollars into the economy if we do that. Um, and that's all I have to say today, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you so very much for coming, Mr. Bong.
Uh, because I can't speak English, I brought someone who's going to translate for me.
Yeah. I live in the United States for quite a while now and I've noticed that, uh, Koreatown is the only area that doesn't have too many parks.
And, uh, uh, Koreatown residents also need a space to rest and, um, uh, because we don't have too many parks, we just have to do, make do with whatever little green spaces that we have in front of our yard.
I understand when I came, when I was coming to the United States, that, uh, the United States is a land of equal opportunity.
But to have, um, no parks in poor areas and to have all, you know, all these parks in another area, I don't think that's fair.
I hope the people in this council know how bad the situation is out there for the people who have to live in terrible conditions in the city.
And to live in a, um, a peaceful environment, the, a public park is a must and I hope you guys understand that.
And the city councilman of our area, uh, fully knowing that his area has the least amount of parks, uh, least amount of green spaces, wasn't in front all out trying to get the park is really, really sad.
I would like to close by, uh, asking all of you to reconsider and, uh, to think about fairness when you, when we're talking about parks, about anything and, uh, I hope that you guys can, uh, be fair and be equal in, in your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you all for, uh, coming today. Uh, Ms. Barclay, if we could do, uh, I neglected to put item eight on the, uh, consent calendar as well.
Yes, sir. Item eight is a report from the Community Development Department and the CAO relative to the 2010 Community Services Block Grant Award and related actions.
Okay, uh, then without objection, on item eight, we'll adopt the CAO report. And if that, that brings us to item one.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to read the item? Item, item one is a report from the Department of City Planning relative to the development of a citywide mixed income housing ordinance.
Okay, let's, let's just wait for a second to the room, uh, clears. Uh, could you read that item again?
Yes, sir. Item one is a report from the Department of City Planning relative to the development of a citywide mixed income housing ordinance.
Well, you know, this is, uh, uh, an issue that Mr. Reyes and I have worked long and hard on and, um, at this time, I'm going to, uh, ask Mr. Reyes to, to make a, a few comments as we try to come up with a way to keep this ball rolling. And, uh, with that, Mr. Reyes, I defer to you. And, and thank you for all your work on this item.
Thank you for the, uh, collaboration and during effort that, uh, we've been able to, uh, demonstrate and hopefully evolve into a place that, uh, gives us solutions. I'd like to ask the department personnel of various departments that are here, uh, planning, I believe, housing, anybody from CRA? No? Uh, colleagues, uh, we have been given a report dated February 3rd. It's written, put forth by our planning director and in it, there's some sobering realities as to what challenges lies before us in terms of dealing and coming forth with a mixed income policy that, uh, requires a, the type of attention that, uh, reflects a complexity that we have never seen in, in many, many years. Starting with our economic condition and the fact that revenues have fallen so low is directly impacted the planning department's personnel to extend where we might be at anywhere between 10 to 15 planners available to work on policy issues. The balance of the department seems to be focused on casework as, uh, being pursued by the mayor's office and, and other interest groups and the, um, the whole process of economizing and making a much more efficient process for moving permits, the 12 to 2, uh, program. And that in itself has created, uh, I believe, uh, a real tough situation, not only for the planning department, but for the housing and CRA because without destinations and where we can build our housing, uh, we are very challenged as to say, what is a citywide policy that allows for affordability to exist in this great city? And when we complicate that fiscal reality with the state politics and Costa Hawkins and the latest ruling from the Palmer case, that in itself states that we are not allowed, it's against state law, to essentially enforce affordable units, uh, at a rental, uh, at the rental level, but it does allow it for private. Now from a citizenry point of view, uh, because of the economy, there is not much housing development occurring, uh, and the few that does occur does not really get to the need of the city. And so our dilemma is, we have a governor who most will say would never pass a bill that would change Costa Hawkins.
Or would never sign one.
Would never sign. And you have a legislative, uh, body that is continually changing with all the terminative issues. Uh, so for us to gain traction on a statewide level, uh, is a, uh, is a daunting task. Uh, it has failed before to change Costa Hawkins. So I would like to suggest that if we can have the directors of, of planning and housing in CRA perhaps come back with, uh, a report with this initial report in mind and to see how we can move forward on the strategy. Uh, perhaps fold in some of the, uh, advocates in that discussion, uh, so that we can see what's in front of us and perhaps approach this issue with our personnel in a manner in which we can complement our needs. Because again, without entitlements, without a planning strategy, it's hard to say where and how we can approach this on a citywide basis. I think for most of us in this committee... I think for most of us in this committee, we know that we have taken our fair share of housing with our own districts. And how to move the city wide with SB 1818 existing is truly a challenge. So colleagues, I would ask that if we can continue this item and allow for the departments to collaborate and look at how we can approach this issue. I know our new housing director is all six weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks in the city? And so we probably throw him in the deep end of the pool here. But I do want to see if we can establish a strategy that allows us to be more constructive as opposed to... And I know we can allow them to speak and give us a few points of view in terms of what they see in front of us. I think the one thing I want to drive home, and I'll probably repeat this over and over again, that I understand and I'm very clear the need to be more efficient on case processing. And it's something we cannot abandon. We need to get there. But that is only a partial solution. If our community plans had some life and substance with real benchmarks where we can complete real committee plans, then half of the casework, I feel, would diminish over time. Because the destination for where we can build housing would have been agreed upon by the stakeholders of every community. The different interest groups would have a chance to participate in that committee plan. And having the ability to move projects administratively as opposed to having to deal with these issues in court in variances and exemptions would allow for this city to be viewed as a much more friendlier city for the business community, the investment community, but also because it's protecting the people who live in each community because they were part of that scenario building. It sounds very conceptual. It sounds intangible. It's hard to really digest for many who don't understand the planning discipline. But that, I believe, is something we cannot abandon and we have to figure out a way to sustain the committee plans we already have invested in. Because we've invested a lot of money in that process as well. So with that, I can come back. But thank you for the opportunity. And Ms. Perry, did you?
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to also raise an issue and also reiterate something that Mr. Reyes said. Community plan is, you know, the definitive and guiding document for our blueprint for how to develop our respective communities. And for me, it's been an utmost priority. And as you know, I've had probably the top three most development in housing in the entire city, both in downtown and LA. So obviously, you know, there's a need. But I also recognize the bubble burst, at least for the last two years. We've been pretty flat. And I've been struggling with, as we go through these budget cuts and reductions. You know, basically, I don't know how else to say this except that there's less work because nobody's bringing in new construction. There aren't a lot of adaptive reuse projects. And I wondered, and maybe you can explain this in the report, how that works with staff reduction? Because I'm making some assumptions, and they may be wrong, that with less incoming work and fewer people should be able to get more done since there's less work to be done. And, you know, I hope you can address that.
I would be happy to, and I suspect that later today as we talk about budget cuts, that we will be able to have that discussion. I appreciate very much the understanding about the cuts. I think what you will see is that the planning department has been disproportionately cut in the budget over the last year and a half with both cuts of our employees, unfunded vacancies, a high rate of E-RIP, and with the furloughs where we have more than eighty percent of our staff that are on the ten percent furlough. At the end of this fiscal year, and I'll give you more detail this afternoon, at the end of this fiscal year, without layoffs and without thinking of future furloughs, the planning department will be at one-half the capacity that it was or that our budget reflected a year and a half ago. One-half. And in the past, three-quarters of our folks, even six months ago, three-quarters of our folks were doing case processing. And the case processing is down about forty percent. So it's not down a half. And the cuts have been disproportionately planners. More than seventy-five percent of the loss has been in the planner classifications. If we go forward with the kind of layoffs, and I understand, you know, what the situation is. If we go forward with those and furloughs next year, there will be no policy program in the planning department because we will not have enough people to do the casework and at even a minimal level because the staffing reductions have been more than the reduction in the caseload significantly.
So then what you're saying is your priorities would be, your priority would be just casework?
Well, I mean, we are obligated by law to do the casework. And we went forward last year and asked the development community to pay a significant amount more in the hopes that we would be protecting by creating a separate fund for case processing. And that special fund hasn't come to you yet, but will within the next couple of months. And so that special fund and those higher fees were meant and supported by the development community so that they could protect that service and not be subject to the ups and downs of the general fund. Unfortunately, the way the CAO is looking at all of the budgets in terms of cuts, they look at positions based on one of two things. You are either fully reimbursable, one hundred percent, or you are general fund. And because our caseworkers are not one hundred percent reimbursable yet, remember, we were going to phase in the overheads. So next year, half the overhead goes into effect the following year. So the positions are not one hundred percent reimbursable. They are treated as if they were a hundred percent general fund. So we are asked to make cuts based on all of those positions being considered general fund. So we're in a very serious situation. And I think you all know, I came here to do real planning. I came here to do community plans. I believe strongly that a lot of our issues around casework are the fact that we don't have good community plans that allow developers to do things consistent with the plan, consistent with the zoning, and consistent with the desires of both the council and the community. So that is my highest priority. And until I looked at the future cuts, I was hoping that we could remain a small cadre of planners who would work on community plans. I'm working with the universities to get full-time, year-round internship programs, volunteers from the design community.
With your internship programs, you're doing it... Well, I do this too, where they do it for class credit, so we don't have to pay them.
Yeah. Well, actually, some of the schools have suggested that they could help us or we could get grants to help make it a paid internship program.
Well, if you want to ramp up quickly, I know that's what I've been doing. USC does it, where you fill out forms and for them, and they take them.
Right. We actually have about fifty internships right now.
Yeah, great.
And but for the community plan program, that was our goal. But even to do that, we need a few planners that are available to direct the program and direct the work. And it is getting more and more dire for us every day to be able to see any light at the end of this tunnel. I mean, we're facing, you know, twenty layoffs. And my understanding is with another five hundred, that's another ten for us. So it would be thirty more layoffs. And again, at a ten percent furlough, the remaining two hundred people, it's a twenty more capacity gone just by virtue of the furlough. So, you know, I had a hundred and seventy-four planners working just on cases six months ago. At the end of this, I won't have a hundred and seventy-four planners at all. So it's a fairly dire situation. But in terms of this program, while we have in the past collaborated with both CRA and the Housing Department, I think we're very excited to also integrate into our process quickly our new housing director and, you know, the new leadership in the CRA because they have not had an opportunity to really weigh in and to offer new ideas. And so we are anxious to do that and we're happy to take the time to do that and come back.
Okay, thank you. And no more. Oh, Mr. Alaton?
Are there as many developments being processed as there were before?
The development projects are down about forty percent. But we're doing a lot more things like appeals and things of that sort that are much more time-intensive.
What is the ratio?
Of appeals?
You gave a proportion that development is down. What is the proportion?
I think that the casework, the casework from its high about two years ago, it's down about forty-something percent. The casework.
The development.
The number of cases that are coming in.
You're talking about appeals?
No, I'm talking about all casework, including appeals, but all casework.
It's now forty percent?
It's down a little more than forty percent.
And the budget proposals and the layoffs, or I should say the E-RIPS and all that?
Will make the planning department down about half of its capacity from two years ago. Down half.
Half of its capacity or half of its...
Meaning that two years ago, our budget reflected four hundred authorized positions. Not all of those positions were filled, but as those positions were added to our budget, they came with a work program. For instance, when you all agreed to an extensive, general, I mean, an extensive community plan program, you authorized a number of positions to do that. And many of those positions never were able to be filled. So we had a significant number of vacancies, but we still had begun all of those work programs.
You went from four hundred to what?
We went from four hundred. In the last budget year, they removed thirty-five positions permanently and they took away funding for sixty-nine vacancies. So we lost a hundred, more than a hundred positions. So one quarter of the department was...
So development and appeals are down forty percent.
Mm-hmm.
And you lost twenty-five percent of your staff.
That was in the budget. But what has happened since the budget is natural attrition where we've lost four or five people. Forty-two people signing up for E-RIP. And most of those will be gone within the next month. I'm told that by March thirteenth, they will all be gone. About half of them, they're gone now. And on top of that, eighty percent of our staff is on a ten percent furlough. So we had two hundred and forty-four people on furlough. That is exactly the same as twenty-four people walking out the door.
Okay, so you had a four hundred full-time equivalents in your budget. What is the full-time equivalence now?
When we finish with, when we finish with E-RIP, it's going to be a little over two hundred people left in the planning department. I think two hundred and twenty. And that's before we face the layoffs and additional furloughs for next year.
Okay, and then finally, four hundred positions. What is your assessment of your capacity at four hundred?
At four hundred, we were doing our full work program. We had, we were going to have new people to help us with case processing. And it fully staffed all of the twelve community plans, where every community plan had two planners working on it. And it staffed a lot of the new programs. It staffed River. It staffed cornfield-specific plan. A lot of individual projects.
Now, of all of those things, what would affect the reinvestment in Los Angeles the most?
I think...
The least, I should say. Well, if we eliminated it, what would... I mean, I would think that community plans could wait.
The community plans are...
I have some of the oldest in the city, so...
You would imagine the community plans, I wasn't sure.
Could wait compared to the cornfield that would stimulate development.
Some of the... We immediately put on hold those community plans where we had not already made the huge investment in the traffic work and the EIRs. Several of the community plans, five or six of them, have already had about a million dollars invested in them for both the full EIRs and for the traffic work.
So you just can't stop?
Well, you can stop them, but you run the risk that if you stop it, when you come back, that work will no longer be valid and you'll have to redo it. So our goal was to take whatever capacity we had and work on the ones, the closest one to being done, get it done. And then work on the next one. And in fact, we anticipate going to Planning Commission with the Hollywood Community Plan, with the San Pedro. But we want to get them done, the ones that are close. I would work very hard to find whatever capacity because I don't want to lose the investment that we've made.
Do you have any special fund positions?
Only a few special fund positions. They're all filled, yeah. We have no vacancies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the overarching issues here that really speaks to the future of the city is if we're going to get a revenue base that's going to feed the general fund coffers, we need to stimulate an environment that does create jobs. Now, there's several policy issues in front of us, colleagues. None of them is billboards. We have yet to close that loop. And that's a major policy discussion that requires the skills and products of the planners themselves. I hate to bring this up, but the second part of the medical marijuana issue is still in front of us. We've dealt with the most general policy concerns. Now we have to deal with implementation. And so the implementation side does not occur without the planning department's input and how they work with building and safety and the police department. That's still in front of us. Next thing comes policy. Well, that will come back. The SB 375, we're all claiming, and we're making a big issue about being a green city. How can you be a green city if you do not have the planning policy that deals with the transportation, housing, and development issues that deals with green principles and how we develop as a city? Without that staff, we cannot be a green city. It's just impossible. And that's incorporated within the committee plans as well. So these are very real issues in front of us. We spent too much time on many of these topics. And the fact is, without the planners, we would not have moved forward. And so, again, we need to put things in context. And it looks like we are crippling ourselves in creating solutions for our budget when we eliminate these policy development experts that can help us make decisions. So with that, I appreciate your support on this, Councilman.
Okay, I want to thank all of you for coming. So basically, what we'll do is we'll continue the item and hope that housing, CRA, and planning can get back with us with suggestions. So thank you. I have one public comment card on this. Betsy, if you're still here.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Betsy Handler. I'm the Director of Legal Services at Inner City Law Center. And I want to talk on one of the three proposals, which is the idea of amending or clarifying Costa-Hawkins. And I understand Councilmember Reyes's pessimism on the ability of anyone to do that. However, I wouldn't be a public interest lawyer if I let pessimism rule my life. In this time, excuse me, of extreme economic crisis, perhaps it's time for the city to look for allies in the private and public sector as well. First of all, I believe that there are seventy-three jurisdictions whose laws, whose mixed-income housing ordinances, that's why we can't call it inclusionary zoning anymore, ordinances are affected. That's seventy-two allies. There is the Legal Aid Association of California, of which I happen to be a board member. It is an organization that advocates on behalf of public interest law firms, mostly legal services corporation law firms.